Welcome, everybody. Welcome, everybody. We're going to begin with the public hearing for ordinance O dash twenty-three dash twenty-five, an ordinance of the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach, Maryland, naming and designating three public parks, Fox Corner, Schistler Park, Old Camp Brown's Park, and to establish Favre Way. Is there anybody in the audience that has any, any comment on this, on this ordinance? Hearing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing? On favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it? Let's see if it's seven yet. I'll wait. Okay, everybody, we're going to begin the January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four Town Council meeting, first one of the new year. I encourage everybody to stay safe with the impending, you know, snow, and Jay and his guys will take care of the rest. The record read that the entire council minus Vice President Fink is present, and at this time, we have the honor of saying the.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it? At this time, is there any public comment on any item on the agenda? Hearing none. Approval of the minutes of the December twenty-first public hearing?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it? Approval of the minutes of the December twenty-first Town Council meeting?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it? Approval of the minutes of the January sixteenth informational work session?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it? And tonight, we have the honor of having some of our fine folks from, from Calvert Health come here and, and give us a, a presentation. We have their little packet here, and please step up, sir. Tell us who you are again, like we don't know, but.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council members. I'm Jeremy Bradford, President and CEO of Calvert Health. It's both an honor and a privilege to be back before you all tonight, and thank you for the opportunity for me to speak on behalf of the Board of Directors, as well as the over eleven hundred employees that we have at Calvert Health. It's an honor to stand before you all tonight, Kasia and I, and I would like to take this opportunity to recognize Kasia Sweeney, who is our Vice President of Strategy and Business Development, and Kasia will be joining me tonight in offering a state of the hospital update, as well as to share with you all tonight, the new strategic plan that was just approved by Board of Directors in October. So with that, I, I'm very excited to share with you some of the things that have been occurring in our health system. As you know, Calvert Health is an independent health system that truly embodies the community. We invest in programs and services that are important to those we serve. We listen to our constituents, we listen to our customers, both internally and externally. As you know, our employees are our customers. We have their families, as well as our church members, and many other people that we serve hand in hand every single day, and we take that very seriously. One thing that you will always hear me say is that you got to focus on quality first. When you focus on quality, everything else falls in line, and that's really the model that we have at Calvert Health, and you're going to hear a little bit about that tonight with some of the outcomes and the accolades that we've received recently. But I would be remiss if I did not share with you all, over the past five years, that the investment that Calvert Health has made in the communities, and I just want to say thank you for your ongoing support and your commitment to not only our organization and our employees and our volunteers, but just the difference that we make every single day, because you don't go at it alone. Everything comes with a partnership and a collaboration, and that's why we're here tonight, to ensure that we're aligned with your expectations, which you all want as council members and the mayor, but also what this community deserves, and we want to make sure that we're closely aligned with you. So with that, I wanted to just highlight that over the past five years, Calvert Health has spent more than sixty-five million dollars, hard to believe, but over sixty-five million dollars to add cutting-edge technology, improve our facilities, over fifty million dollars in the tower improvements that were made a few years ago, as well as continuing to expand services and specialized services at Calvert Health. In the past three years, we've invested millions each year on community benefit activities. We conduct a community health needs assessment every three years. We just recently wrapped up our community health needs assessment in partnership with the Health Department, and that information's going to be coming forth. But also, we offer charity care, regardless of one's ability to pay when they walk through the doors of Calvert Health, we're there to serve them and provide the highest quality of care. So that's very important to us, and oftentimes, we do not get reimbursed for the services that we're rendering to members of our community. And also, we just continue to focus on our mission-driven services, as well as health screenings and outreach programs with our mobile unit that comes into the community, as well as other parts of the community, to ensure that we're taking care to those who oftentimes may not be able to come to us. And then, too, I just wanted to highlight, as I talk about the organization, you're only as good as the people you serve, right, and those who are aligned with you. And those who are aligned with us are a little, over eleven hundred employees in our health system, as well as volunteers. And I'm pleased to share with you all tonight, when you look at the graph, we have a number of volunteers that work within our organization, that volunteer the most precious thing that they could possibly give, and that's their time. So we have over sixteen thousand hours that are donated to our organization to serve our people and our patients that come into our facility. Also, I wanted to just highlight that we're eighty licensed beds, made up of three hundred and twelve physicians and providers that are on our medical staff, as well as total surgeries, and I'll touch on that, just shy of thirty-six hundred surgeries performed in two thousand and twenty-three, forty-nine thousand outpatient visits, and approximately eight thousand visits in the Twin Beaches Clinic, and that clinic continues to grow, and that demand continues to increase, as well as our emergency department, almost thirty-six thousand visits, just shy of thirty-six thousand visits, and we're continuing to improve the access point and the throughput in our emergency department, because oftentimes, that's the front door of the hospital, when people are coming in through those services that eventually are admitted into the organization or discharged to outpatient services. So where are we and where are we going? One of the things I wanted to touch on is the accolades that our organization has achieved over the past year, and not listed on the presentation here is two things that I wanted to point out to you. One is, where do we rank with regards to Centers for Medicare and Medicaid? That's kind of the governing body, if you will, for our health system, and they rank each health system across the country from a one-star to a five-star, and currently, Calvert Health sits at the four-star mark, which is an achievement in itself, striving to achieve the five out of five stars. And if you look at our strategic plan, and we'll talk about that tonight, our pursuit is five out of five with CMS, as well as the other governing body, if you will, as far as ranking organizations and health systems across the country, is called Leapfrog. They rank you from an A to an F, as far as your grade, and we currently sit at a B, with the pursuit in our strategic plan to achieve an A rate, because no matter who walks through our doors, whether you're the wealthiest person in our community or the poorest, you deserve nothing but the best, and what's a lot our pursuit is, day in and day out. So where are we and where are we going? So I share with you where we're at and what we've been able to achieve, but I wanted to also share with you our attained reaccreditation with American College of Surgeons and Commission on Cancer. We were ranked the top community cancer program in the country, and as I shared with you in my last presentation, our collaboration, our partnership with Duke Health has really taken our cancer program to the next level, and offered a level of service and continued growth in our cancer care program that oftentimes we would not be able to do alone. And it's not necessarily taking patients to Duke, but it's also bringing the services and making sure that patients stay close to home, and then that's what it's about, and we wanted to highlight that tonight. And then also, I wanted to recognize that we achieved the U.S. News World Report for High Performer for Heart Failure, Kidney Failure, Hip Fracture, and Back Surgery, along with COPD, and those are just a couple of recognitions with the U.S. News World Report, as well as the American Heart Association, and being recognized and honored for outstanding stroke care for eleven years in a row, and that's quite an accomplishment with our team. And also, named one of the top one hundred critical care for third consecutive year in a row by Health Grades, and that's not an easy thing to accomplish, you know, especially three years in a row, being ranked in the top one hundred for critical care services in our ICU. There's something to be said about not only our employees, but the engagement we have within our medical staff. And then, lastly, listed as one of the nation's top oncology programs in Becker Hospital Review, and that's the one thing that I really wanted to, to highlight tonight, and Kasia has done a phenomenal job, along with our leadership in the cancer care service line, as well as our physicians, to continue to advance cancer care in our community. It remains a top priority, and it's one that we're committed to long-term in providing services, not just in the community, but also those outside of our community are leaning on us for cancer care services. So one thing that I wanted to share with you before I turn it over to Kasia with regard to our strategic plan, which is going to position us for success over the next five years, is the approach that we took. It was an inclusive approach. We had a lot of engagement from our employees, from the community, from the medical staff, from our board. It was a very inclusive approach to ensure that we were well-represented and everyone had input into our strategic plan, because that's really our true north for the next five years. So it's important for me to kind of set that stage with you before I turn it over to Kasia, because Kasia's going to outline some of the key initiatives that we've identified, that we feel like that is most important for our community, as well as for our health system. So without further ado, I'd like to take this opportunity to invite Kasia Sweeney, Vice President of Strategy and Business Development, up to the podium to highlight our strategic plan, and at the end, we'd like to entertain any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. So as Jeremy said, I'm Kasia Sweeney, Vice President for Strategy and Business Development at Calvert Health. It's been my privilege to serve this hospital and this community for a long time. This is my twenty-third year at Calvert Health, in a variety of different roles over that, that time, and I just have to tell you that in all of my years there, this is probably the time where I feel most excited about the future of Calvert Health, the direction that we're going, Jeremy's leadership, other leaders in the hospital, there's just great enthusiasm for what we can continue to do for this community. So I hope you'll feel that as we talk about our strategic plan and the direction we're going tonight, and I certainly welcome your questions at the end as well. So as Jeremy said, we started embarking on the journey of developing a new strategic plan for the health system last spring, so we kicked it off with our board in March, and we spent quite a few months with a steering committee of twenty-five members, physicians, board members, community members, poring over tons of data about our community and trying to anticipate the needs of our community going into the future. All told, I think there were about five hundred individuals across the health system and from the community who contributed the ideas that helped us form this plan. We started with our mission and our vision, so we have had a longstanding mission of serving the needs of this community, but we wanted to really refine that and also think a little bigger than just the hospital. So after a lot of deliberation, we settled on this new mission statement to improve the health and well-being of those we serve. So whether you're in the hospital, in our outpatient clinics, in the mobile health unit, or whether we're just thinking about the health of our population and how we can work to improve it, that's all part of our mission. And then we have a new vision, to be the trusted healthcare leader, delivering a lifetime of exceptional care. So when you think about the responsibilities of a community health system, it really is across that lifetime. All of us will turn to Calvert Health at some point, or our families will turn to Calvert Health, and we want to make sure that we're there to be the trusted healthcare leader. We also reevaluated our value statements, and we have five, some same and some new value statements that are for all of our employees and health system to understand what we stand for, and I'm going to talk about each one of them. As Jeremy mentioned, first and foremost, our job is to provide high-quality care. So our first value is to deliver safe, high-quality care, setting the bar for excellence, so quality care and patient experience, being at the top of what we value. Second is compassion. I believe strongly you should not be working in healthcare if you are not interested in serving people. We're here to meet people where they are, and we strive to embody kindness, helpfulness, confidence in the care that we provide. Third is teamwork. Healthcare, as you know, is a multidisciplinary sport, and everybody has to be doing their part, from doctors, nurses, techs, pharmacists, everyone in the system has to be on the same page and working together, so we work with a spirit of collaboration, coming together for a common goal. This one is an important one, especially in this time. As you know, thinking about diversity, not only in our employees and our staff, but also in equity of care, making sure that we are embracing the value of including and welcoming all people with respect and an open mind. And then finally, integrity. So where would we be if we were not willing to be the kind of people who hold ourselves to the highest ethical standards, earning the trust of our community through our words and our actions every day? So with that as the foundation and the background of how we intend to continue to serve the community, I'm going to share the strategic initiatives that we are putting forward for the next five years. There are six key strategic initiatives that we're going to talk about tonight, culture incompetence, primary care, outpatient and ambulatory services, our clinical service lines, community hospital care, and community partnerships. So speaking first about culture incompetence, this is our category where we are thinking about the things that we need to do internally as a health system to be able to position ourselves for sustainability and high-quality care going forward. So one of the main aims under culture incompetence is making sure that we have top-quality providers, they are well-trained, they are prepared to deliver the highest quality of care in our community. As Jeremy mentioned, we're striving for five-star recognition and A-rated recognition, and that requires us to have people who are embracing that and knowledgeable and able to provide that level of care. Also, as I'm sure you have read in the media and probably experiencing in your own businesses, workforce development is really important, so we have to be thinking about that future pipeline of healthcare resources, and how are we making sure that we have a sustainable plan to continue to be able to deliver on our promise and commitment to the community through people? The second is primary care, so we're calling this the roots of the tree, although obviously we take care of many people through the emergency department, really the goal is to make sure that we have a strong primary care network in our community, so people have access to care long before they need hospital acute services, so we can prevent some of those things that might bring people to the hospital in the future. Calver County, as you know, can be a challenging place to recruit physicians, so again, thinking about that pipeline, how do we make sure that we have enough access to primary care here, that we're developing strategies for making sure that we have physicians and nurse practitioners and primary care, and that we're all working together as a team? So the hospital has some employed primary care doctors, there are also private physician groups in the community, and we want to make sure that across all of that, we're delivering access for our community. The third is outpatient services and ambulatory care, so as you may also be reading in the media, there will always be a need for the hospital and the acute care services of the hospital, but more and more things can be done successfully in an outpatient setting, so whether that's ambulatory surgery, different diagnostic procedures. We wanted to have a category that allowed us to be thinking about how do we invest in those outpatient services as well. So again, to the point of access, people have access to care, and it's the right place for the type of care that they need. So that will be our focus around outpatient services. And also geography, so making sure that we have good, high-quality healthcare services positioned close to home from an outpatient perspective. Many years ago, our health system put into place the, the Twin Beaches Community Health Center and the Dunkirk Medical Office Building and the Solomon's Building, and the idea was to make sure that quality healthcare was no more than fifteen minutes from anyone in Calver County, and we want to just revisit that and make sure that we have strong programs in all of those areas. While all of our services are important, there are things that we anticipate will be particularly important based on the demographics of our population and our community, and we've selected four clinical service lines to really hone in on and focus on in these next five years. So the first Jeremy mentioned already, and that's cancer care. We have an unfortunate high rate of cancer incidence in our community, and we want to make sure that we have great resources, so people don't have to travel far for care. Our partnership with Duke Health has already helped us to expand that, and will continue to expand even further. Next is women's health. Obviously, women's health is very important, and we want to make sure we have a strong women's program for the lifetime of the women in our community, whether they're childbearing years or later on. The next is digestive disease and weight management. So about a year and a half ago, we embarked on a journey to begin a bariatric surgery program at Calvert Health, but we know that across America, and certainly here in Calver County, there are many people who struggle with weight, and that contributes to many other diseases that are preventable, like diabetes and heart disease, anything cancer. So we want to make sure we're investing in weight management programs and digestive disease programs for an aging population. And the fourth area is orthopedics, so we've been fortunate to have some strong private orthopedics groups in our community, but thinking into the future, as we have an aging population and more and more people are in need of those services, we want to make sure that we have a sustainable plan for delivering strong orthopedics. Number five is community hospital care, so obviously, we still have a hospital to run, and it's important that we have good specialists in the hospital, call coverage, so when you come to the emergency department and you need a specialist, we've made sure that we've recruited folks and have them on call and available for our team, and then again, focusing on our quality and all the services that are delivered inside the hospital, to have a very strong acute care program for our community. And then the last area of focus and strategic initiatives is around community partnerships. We recognize that we can't do everything by ourselves, and we're fortunate to live in a community where there are so many people willing to work together, so we've already have strong partnerships with the College of Southern Maryland and the Health Department, but we want to continue to work on that into the future and be innovative in our thinking about how we develop partnerships, to make sure that we are serving the community in the best way possible together, from a healthcare perspective. And that is my last slide, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
I appreciate that, and I know the council wants to say hello, but before we do, I want to just tell you a quick story. I've, I may have told this story once or twice before, probably about a quarter century ago, I was a wet behind the ears councilman in this, this very room, and I think we were considering helping you all out in a drive for a new maternity ward, and like I said, I was, you know, I was new, you know, and, and before that meeting that we were, you know, taking it up, I, I grabbed the mayor at that time, Gerald Donovan, and I said, Gerald, I said, let me ask you a question. I said, this is, you know, Chesapeake Beach, why are we thinking about sending money down to Prince Frederick? And he says, Patty, he says, let me ask you a question. He said, where do you think the women in this town are having their babies? And, you know, from that, he enlightened me, and from, from that moment on, I became good friends with Jim Zinnis, and like all of my colleagues in, in seven councils, who've been ardent supporters of, of Calvert Health, so thanks for what you do, and we really do appreciate you coming out here on this cold evening, and like I said, you know, I know we all want to say hello to you, so I'll start with the longest-serving councilperson here, that probably remembers some of them stories herself, so if you will, Councilwoman Bodine.
Yeah, Gerald could tell quite a story. Good to see you again.
I know, I recognized you right away.
Exactly.
It's been a while.
It's a pleasure for you to be here, and thank you for the, going over the strategic plan, I think it's important for our community, obviously. I think the health clinic down in North Beach is a real blessing to have here, and I'm totally supportive of, you know, whatever we can do to help to ensure that that level of community support is there. I think the idea of fifteen minutes from your healthcare services is a goal that y'all achieved and is really appreciated. Other than that, just good luck, and I, I enjoyed your presentation immensely. I mean, it's good to see where y'all are headed, and I think it's a solid direction.
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate that, and I appreciate the support.
Thank you. Thank you.
I just wanted to comment that, given the relatively rural nature of Calver County, it's incredible to have a facility of the stature serving our residents. So thank you very much for your service. And on another note, I'll just pass along congratulations as our new co-chair, vice chair of the county's Economic Development Advisory Commission. So Kasia is going to be backing me up as chair.
Oh, wonderful.
Larry agreed to never be absent from a meeting.
Well, he won't.
That's a great honor. I'm looking forward to that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman?
Yeah, welcome back to our small town. I think that my oldest boy, James, was one of the 36,000 ER visits that you're tracking, I guess, over the past year. That's a little under 100 per day. It's quite a door, revolving door there. Some of the, I don't really have any questions for you. I just wanted to underscore some of the things that you're, many of, everything really you're striving for. These are things that any community hospital, all community hospitals should be striving for. We're really, y'all are really close to attaining all of that if you have it. The striving for five stars and A ratings. I can see you're very close with a lot of that stuff. That's good work. And our community certainly deserves that. The, I wanted to mention a growth in community trust. The growth in community trust, that, that has been important. I've been in the county for getting close to 25 years. And the hospital has certainly grown a lot. I, I can say that the trust in the hospital, the community trust in the hospital, has grown quite a bit since I've been here, started here 25 years ago. The, one of your quotes here about integrity, upholding the highest ethical standards, earning trust through our words and actions. In your words and actions, you paraphrase that, it earns the trust in the, with the community. And the, the comment about quality healthcare for, for residents being 15 minutes away is something certainly to continue to strive for. So I applaud your efforts and your, your leadership here in the community. And we look forward to continued partnership. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Councilman?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you both for being here tonight and for the great presentation. I do appreciate that. Big supporter of the hospital over time. And so I, I think that's great. I think a couple of folks have touched on this. I really liked that idea of services no more than 15 minutes away. Certainly look forward to hearing how you all sounded like you were going to look at the services that you provide and be sure that there's quality services at each of those locations. So I'm glad to hear that. Um, I do have a, a question just under your, your service lines in terms of if you could speak on kitchen services and mental health services at all tonight? Would that?
Yeah, and actually, I really should have mentioned that under community hospital care, but it fits in many categories, as you know. So behavioral health is, of course, a very important focus. And it underlies so many of the other pieces of folks' health. So we're fortunate to have a great partnership with Shepherd Pratt, who you probably know is a recognized leader in mental health services. And they've been providing services and leadership to our inpatient behavioral health unit. And our goal through the strategic plan is to continue to expand that relationship and think about how we can make sure that people have good access, not only in the hospital, but in, through telehealth and in our primary care practices and other parts of the health system as well.
Thank you. I, I, that's, that's an important area. And as you know, I mean, from the news and everywhere else.
Absolutely.
You're in the business, I'm sure you know better than me. But the mental health issues have been growing exponentially over the past five years especially. But even before that, we were having COVID and so it just.
I think it's since I've been mayor. Since I've been mayor.
That certainly has affected my mental health.
I think that's an excellent question. That's an excellent question. I'm really glad you brought that up because I should have pointed that out, that that was something that we did talk about in that area. And when you look at our community health needs assessment, that is one of the areas of focus as well from a community perspective.
Thank you. That's all the questions I have. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Keith.
Uh, thank you again for presenting here. I think my colleagues have pretty much covered everything that could be said. So I'll just say, I hope we see you at the health fair here in May. And hopefully I don't have to visit you down at the hospital too often. Thanks.
Thanks for coming. You, you have our support. Reach out to me or Holly or Sharon anytime. And I know it's cold out there and you want to get on home before it freezes up. So we'll take a pause if you want to just, you know, go, go ahead and get on home.
Thank you all very much.
Can I just say that I just wrapped up my family in our first year here in Calver County. We moved here at, right after Christmas last year. And I can tell you, it's been an absolute blessing. This community has been so open and welcoming to myself and our family. And I just wanted to say thank you. And this is my second time in a short period of time presenting to the council. And it's an absolute honor and a pleasure to partner with you all and serve beside you in this community. Yeah, thank you.
Now you know why we fight so hard to keep our small-town charm.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Well, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Okay. County administrators report, we've read Holly's report. As always, Holly, is there anything you, you want to mention before you take questions?
One quick item. I just wanted to thank our Public Works and Treatment Plant staff for all their work in our past weather and upcoming weather events. Thank you.
I'll begin with Councilwoman Hartman.
Thank you. I just, I do have a couple of questions. One thing is in the Aquatics Park RFP, I hope that we're able to include some green space, like real grass and trees as part of that. I hope, I hope that's something that is possible because it is a nice addition to it and helps to absorb extra water. And I also have a question on Safe Roots to School. There's a new project team. Is that a state project team?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Did we have one before?
We did have a project team before. It transitioned to a new team in December of '23. And so we've been working with them to come in alignment with what they would like to see in the RFP.
Do they have, are they much different than what the last group wanted to see?
I would say process is similar. There's been no change in process.
Okay. And I have a question on page two on the street art. You talk about an informal proposal. What is the significance of an informal, I mean, I know what an RFP is. So what is the informal proposal?
So the Walkable Community Advisory Group brought in Graham Projects, which has done a lot of significant work with Artscape, as you're aware. And so the goal would be to, since this is a new project for the town, to get an idea of what his scope would be to approach something like this. So it's more of an informal process. We're not releasing a scope of work for a price. We're doing some informal pricing to get an idea for budgetary purposes.
Okay, okay, great. Thanks. And then a little farther down there, the water leak? Public, under Public Works, number one. Is that why there were cement trucks out there?
Which one?
Right after that big storm?
Which one are you referring to?
Oh, which water leak? Sorry, Jay.
No worries.
The one at the top of the list. It was on, on 26th, 31st, because, 30th, because all of a sudden, there's dump trucks working on the sidewalks that the state just finished. I thought, huh, what happened there?
That's, that's actually a punch list generated by the state inspector from their work that they did. So they had a few items they missed and a couple they had to correct.
Ah, okay.
So they were not related.
Good, thank you. And then on page three, the Water Reclamation Treatment Plant? Just congratulations on qualifying for the Bay Restoration Grant and for outperforming that, their standards to get there. Well done. And we've had a whole bunch of water flying around, so that's even more impressive. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you. So no, no specific questions. I second congratulations on, on meeting the, the limits there and getting, getting a grant for that. So congratulations there. Also, thank you for continuing to follow up on the solar for the Water Reclamation Treatment Plant and working towards a proposal. Appreciate that. And the final thing is, just wanted to thank Holly and town staff. We're working on the Shattered Stigma 5K and Health Fair. Be Kind to Your Mind Health Fair scheduled for May 18th. So thanks.
Yes, sir. Have a few questions. A general comment about our bidding practices. Having mandatory pre-bids certainly have their advantages. I completely get that. Having somebody's making sure that their news is in, what the project is, is important. But one of the big disadvantages, you're going to get fewer bids. Making the, making the pre-bid mandatory. So I would just suggest each project, each time you're considering to put together a bid, try to keep that in mind.
Yes, and I will just respond to that. We, we do. And we've been making some adjustment, making some of the meetings hybrid. For example, we had a mandatory pre-bid meeting today where we had 13 contractors show up in person. So it's, we, we do adjust the requirements based on what the project is.
Yeah, because we certainly want to develop and cultivate competitive bids. It helps us understand, you know, is the number, we have a good number or not. The Kellums Field Storm Drain into Miller Lovelace Park site work. Miller Lovelace Park site work, is that, are we just talking about the pipe itself? Are we talking about the, adjoining the pipe with the upgrade of the park itself as a single RFP?
It's, it's both projects for both the tot lot. So it's draining the tot lot as well as the field. So it is prepping the groundwork for the tot lot to be constructed.
I see.
And completing all of the grading after the storm drain is installed.
Okay, so some storm drain and some grading, but the actual playground or whatever, if you will, that, that'll be a separate.
It'll be a phase two of the project.
Great. Just the Aquatic Park request for qualifications I see are working through, making some adjustments. We're all eagerly, eagerly following that. And you answered my question on meeting the new state project team for the Safe Walks to School. I, people have been eagerly watching that for quite a while. The street art, the Graham Projects offering an informal proposal. Should we decide to bid something like that? Is that going to preclude them at all from, you know, participating in an actual hard bid?
No, we're, we're really in an informative process right now, trying to understand what a project would entail, trying to understand what the maintenance of it would be. And so, no, the intention would not be to preclude any, any bidders.
Yeah, I put, you know, somebody like that, and they're going to offer their expertise, help guide things that you would want them to be able to bid on the job. So don't want to do anything that would create any ethics concerns. The wet wells, there's a comment here. This is Public Works report. Above-ground upgrades completed fishing creek wet well. That is the one, I think that we were funding that with ARPA funds, maybe? This is the wet well that's located there behind Kellums. I don't know the name of the project back there. And it, that wet well supports the, the community behind Kellums.
Right. And did you want to address that?
And you are correct. It was one of the, kind of the earmarked, if you will, ARPA fundings from the original thing. And originally, it was $350,000 to three-quarters of a million dollars to completely replace. And I've since gone in and I'm going to say piecemealed it and retrofitted it. So we're working on it. And I have done the above-ground component trees, raised elevations with predicted sea level rise. Now we have to work on the underground features. That's the next step. So it's not going to be near the budgetary estimates, but we're still in progress with it.
We were, had a previous meeting and I, and I think I asked this question and I thought that, I thought that Public Works had answered that that upgrade there or whatever you want to characterize it as will allow condominium expansion, that location, should they get passed?
So we're improving it in kind, replacing existing failed componentry. So if something were to be a major development there, they'd probably have to contribute to upgrades to that wet well.
Well, upgrades are, upgrades beyond what we're working on now.
Right. In other words, now it's in a, due to the saltwater, a few floods, it's in some failing conditions. So we're replacing it with different material, but not upgrading it as making it bigger or better. We're just fixing kind of what's wrong.
So if, just hypothetically, if some condominiums were ultimately approved down there, whether three months from now, five years from now, that development would need to upgrade that wet well, in your opinion, in order to?
It's possible. There's other routes similar to Chesapeake Village. When a developer came in, we made them bring the line all the way to the plant. So depending on what goes on there, we would consult. And, you know, whether we upgrade that wet well or they have to bring a line to gravity facilities. I mean, there's different options. I wouldn't necessarily think where that wet well is and its location, predicted sea level rise, that we're going to invest much more in that facility. So that's why we're kind of just fixing it as it is.
Questions? Railway trail. I walked the trail this weekend. The, how old is that, that trail now? Is that 18 years? Is it 20?
I'm, I'm looking at Jay, I don't know.
That's a good question.
My point of my question there, really, Jay, not to put you on the spot is.
Sure, it's definitely not 20 years old.
The degradation of the trex there, I know you're aware of that. I'm walking on that. I've seen where a few boars have been selected, you know, selected and replaced. You know, I would just urge the town, lifespan of trex versus the age of that, that trail and to, on the horizon, put a budget to really replace all of that stuff that hasn't been replaced there. And then the, there's some mud. Where that framed portion of the trail meets the asphalt, it might be there near Baby Hills. But there's some mud, you know, quite, that's collected there. And there was, there was a family there. And I know there was a little girl that fell on her bike there at that, right at that location. And everything was okay. They were laughing about it, but I just wanted to mention that. Certainly a pleasure to walk that trail. I guess at Kellums, we, I know we were hosting games nights down there. I guess those are closed, closed for the season because it's been cold.
Flag football that starts in March timeframe, so we're.
Yeah. So you're thinking of starting that up again?
Well, we're waiting to get our RFP back early February to make sure there's not going to be any, any interruption. I've talked to the team. And so we're, we're just waiting to receive it back in early February and then we'll hopefully make that final determination if there'll be any interruption.
Seems like the RFP would already be done and that would be out for bid if we were trying to make sure. Well, I know we're trying to make sure, trying to meet it, but not have disruption to the flag and the lacrosse.
Our main delay is permits, which are out of our control. So when we get those back, we'll start work.
Afront Park. Has there been any further discussion for making exceptions to nature groups there, like the bird watchers groups had brought up?
We, we haven't talked about it, but it is on my list.
I think the last thing that I have really, the town permit activity. In your report, I presume these are all, they're dated 2023 and enumerated in the normal fashion, I guess. Are these new applications that were taken in in December '23?
Yes.
Okay, so those aren't necessarily issued. It's just that that's kind of what's come online and.
These are actually approved.
These are all, okay. So when we read the report, they are approved permits. Have any other questions? Thank you.
Several things. Under the Aquatics Park RFQ RFP, I just really hope that we can move that along. I know we're going to do design build, so that will expedite implementing the improvements. But sitting here almost at the end of January and we, we haven't even issued the RFQ RFP yet.
Sorry, I mean, we are very close. Wayne actually sent me the RFP document. We're reviewing, making one final review with Jay. And actually, Todd is looking at it as well. So we hope, I hope to get that out in the coming days. We're, we're very close.
My, my concern has grown.
My concern has grown. I know we've already pretty much decided we will not open for this season for the water park. I'm concerned of a possible impact on following year as well, if we don't get this thing moving. Under sustainability, Holly, under the energy audit, is that audit the same as the greenhouse gas report we discussed briefly last month?
It is.
Okay.
However, there were some errors in it that we're correcting, that were not recognized, some improvements that we've made. So, we're finalizing that with University of Maryland.
At some point, I'd be happy to discuss how we can move forward with that from a coastal resiliency point of view. On the Water Reclamation Treatment Plant, again, congratulations on the Bay Restoration Annual Grant. I think for the general public that might be listening tonight, it's really important that we realize the numbers are in here. Our plant is discharging at half of its allowable concentration for nitrogen. That is just amazing, realize that. And the beneficial impact it has on the bay is incredible. I did notice in the discussions here about the solar panels, great, looking forward to seeing some solar panels out there, where I can look out the front of my place and see the solar panels.
That what you do?
And again, with, with the absolutely wacky weather that we've been having the last month, no reported SSO spills or filter bypasses to report is just amazing. A quick question, any updates on considering secondary access into the plant, road access into the plant? We talked a little bit about that a while ago.
So, it used to be owned by Helen, which the town had a relationship with. It was sold off, and I've just talked to Steve today, who's a handyman for Helen. It's three different partners that kind of own it, and I'm trying to track down the person to talk to to get the permission, which is not easy. But we're still pursuing it.
Okay. And then the last one I had is also under Wayne's report on the Reclamation Plant Headworks. Wayne, your report says a location for the remote wet well location has been determined. What, what are we considering there in a remote wet well?
The original wet well location, we intended to expand it in its current location by making modifications to the existing wet well. After having done the core borings, that's not possible. So, we're building a new wet well. It's in a different location, that's what I mean.
And any idea where that remote location might be?
Yes, I do. I can show you where it is.
Okay.
It's on the incoming line. It's just not in the exact location of the existing wet well.
Because obviously, there's the issue of once it gets into the wet well, if it's too remote, we'll have to pump it again.
No, it works by gravity.
Yeah. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Very well.
Sure, real quick, I had the same question, I was wondering, how many folks write a mandatory pre-bid meeting, 13? And so, that's good to hear, and I like the idea that it's hybrid, that's pretty cool. On the Aquatics Park, I echo Larry's concerns about timing. And also, in the RFQ RFP, we'll have the aquatic elements that were discussed in the October meeting, right? Nothing changes, so everything from the swimming pools to the potential for Lays River, just everything was included.
That's correct.
Is that correct? Great. And then moving on, like I said, most of my questions, I also had a question about the grant, but I'll approach it from a slightly different angle. And I just don't remember, is this a grant similar, even though it's not a grant, from the Highway User Revenue Funds, where whatever monies are realized by this grant, are they restricted in any way that I'm not aware of, like for use by the wastewater treatment plant?
All right, which grant were you referring to?
I'm referring specifically on page four, in the last paragraph, it talks about the Bay Restoration Fund Annual O and M Grant for Wastewater Treatment Plant. Now, I just wonder if those are restricted funds in any way that, you know?
My understanding is for operation and maintenance. Did you want to clarify, Josh?
Yeah. Basically, it's a grant that the state gives out for plants that overperform their nutrient removal. And it is, as Holly said, primarily for operation and maintenance. There are no limitations as to the cost on that. Basically, they cause a check, and it goes from there.
Yeah, I just wonder if there were limitations, you know, like if you had to use it for certain maintenance items, or certain improvements, or whatever, but it sounds like it's pretty open, as long as it's used for the wastewater treatment plant in some way.
That's correct.
I just, I couldn't remember. Other than that, I think everything else has been pretty much covered. That's all I had. Thank you.
Very well, thank you. Treasurer's Report, we've received the report, and before I go to Councilwoman Bodine, I just want to comment that last meeting, Vice President Fink mentioned something about the, he was alarmed about the, everybody in Maryland was the draconian $3.3 billion in spending cuts that the governor talked about over six-year transportation spending budget, or whatever it was. And I had mentioned to the public that, you know, that I was hearing whispers from state circle that that might soften up a little bit, you know? And, you know, lo and behold, it did. You know, the governor in his, in the budget that he just introduced, does, you know, soften it up a bit by, I think he added $150 million to the transportation budget. And how's that affect us, how's it affect this town here? How affects this down here is that basically, the HUR funds, Highway User Revenue, was stricken originally by the governor, and it's, it's been restored to its levels. So, that's sort of how, and I have to give a lot of credit there to the Maryland Municipal League, Teresa Coon in particular, for just pushing and pressing, pressing this issue, you know? And these are the reasons why we're a member of that organization. So, you know, they get up there and they fight for, you know, stuff like that. And, you know, when you, $150 million across the state of Maryland, it doesn't go a long way. It doesn't go that far, but the municipalities were taken care of. So, you know, Charlie's not here, but I wanted to, you know, affirm that, you know, what I was hearing was, you know, correct, I just didn't know what numbers it was. So, that's, that's good news. I know the treasurer was happy to hear that. So, we've read her report, is any?
Yeah, that is really good news. The Highway User Revenue money that we receive goes right back into the community in the form of repaving and milling and all that. Jay and his crew create a priority list of areas to repave, and that's what pays for it. And so, this is incredibly good news. Thank you, Mayor. I do have a question, if I may. I know we're introducing some reconciliation ordinances tonight, and we didn't discuss them at the work session, so I just want to provide you an opportunity. Is there anything that you would like to bring forth, you know, on these reconciliations that we ought to pay particular attention to? You know, any, any differences or?
And as to discuss it at the work, the next work session?
Yes, I was going to announce that later. I'm sorry. When I introduced it, I was going to announce that, sorry.
Like a treasurer topic, so you know.
Absolutely.
Other than that, I have no questions. I'm glad you recovered from your audits, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Just in time.
Just in time.
No real questions, just, it'll be an interesting discussion at the work session next month on the budgets coming up, and seeing what we can do with this remaining ARPA reimbursement funds, $3.6 million. We'll see what we can do with that, so, thank you.
Think Aquatic Center. Sir?
Just looking forward to the budget sessions, thanks.
No questions, thank you.
Adam?
I have one small question on the Water Park Budget Fund. Do we anticipate a lot going on for a budget for the Water Park?
The Water Park Budget Fund will be in the March work session, so it's probably, can't answer that question right now.
Okay. I mean, it's not an operational thing.
Yeah, we've got a lot working on before we get to that, but yeah.
Okay, very good, thanks.
Okay, Town Engineers Report, we've read the report. I'll stay right with Councilwoman Hartman, if you have any, any questions?
I have no questions, thank you.
No questions, thanks.
An observation, this probably belongs back in the Holly's administrator report, not necessarily Wayne's here, but Richfield Station, Fishing Creek Trail, trailhead leaving that, there's that retaining wall that goes down. That retaining wall, that's a town asset, right?
Hey, are you familiar with the retaining wall he's referring to?
Are you referring at the end of Block S where the kind of the trail begins, and you make that first lap?
Yeah, where that big wall, it's a big retaining block wall, Allen Block, I think.
I think that being that it's within the right of way of the rail trail, that is the town's, but don't quote me on that, but we can look at that at the end of the day. As of now, none of it is ours because we haven't accepted it.
Oh, really? That's interesting.
That's part of Block S, which is, still has not been accepted. That's on, that particular retaining wall is on my original punch list.
Could we get a definitive answer on that, though, as far as whenever that does transfer, a town or HOA? That's going to, I'd be shocked if that went to the HOA, but shocked to find that out. Along, now, along that, coming past that wall, there's a lot of old abandoned steel fencing that isn't serving any purpose through there. Is that all part of this closeout with the developer there? He's got to clean all that up ultimately, and you have your eye on that stuff, because there's quite a bit of it back there. It's all ripped up, and it looks horrible.
That's captured on our, our new PWA also, and that has to be reinstalled, actually, to continue working there. So, it was, it was part of the county's requirement for the sediment pond there.
There's some comments on here, they look like they're old comments, like the Water Park. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you, sir. Sir?
All my questions were just under the Town Administrator's Report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam?
No questions for me, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Next is the Sheriff's Twin Beach Deputies' Report. We've read the report. Before I stay with Councilwoman Bodine, if she has any questions, I just want to ask a question, make a comment, ask a question myself. You're an old timer now, right?
How you doing, Mayor?
I'm doing very good. Listen, I, I've read, you know, recently that we're going to have two substations in Dunkirk and Lesby?
Yeah, so what the plan is, is they're putting, they're breaking them up kind of substation districts. So, we'll have one, two, three, and four. The beach is actually considered four. They're taking areas and they're putting, they're trying to put more people in a bigger area, and they're going to have a place up there so they can take in, if they have, if they arrest somebody, they can actually take them there and do some of the paperwork there, and then get somebody to transport them down to the, to the detention center.
My concern is basically how that would, how, if at all, and I hope not, it would, you know, trickle down to us. I mean, I don't anticipate us losing any deputy support whatsoever, and I don't anticipate losing your support whatsoever. You're here.
Yes, it does not, it does not change anything for the beach. The beach is, that's one of the places that the beaches are not changing anything. There's nothing to change, and so we're good with that. That has everything to do with this Dunkirk right now and Lesby, and they just want to implement them both in because, you know, it's kind of political, you know? If you don't want to just do Dunkirk because the Lesby people say, well, Dunkirk gets everything, and then you want us to do Lesby because of Dunkirk, you know? So, they wanted to implement everything at one time. So, we'll have, the sheriff's office is kind of the Prince Frederick Central one, and we've got a place up in Dunkirk that we're going to do a substation, and we've got a place, and we've already got the places done, and they're going to run them out and everything.
Yeah, what I've heard is, is positive, you know, feedback from that, but basically, the way the county is, I mean, Dunkirk is the northern end, you know, and that's, that's where people that don't live in the county come down to. And it's, you know, sort of like a, you know, bad guys get a free ride.
Yes.
Into the county, you know, and?
Well, they dip in the northern end of the county, which we're trying to, we're trying to put more people up there. So, because it's dipping into the northern end of the county, they dip in and they get right back out on three, they can get up four and get up 301, or go down two, or whatever. So, we just got to watch, trying to, I think they're trying to prevent that, too. So, we're going to do a lot, I think the whole thing is we're set up a lot of community pleasing to with it, so.
And yeah, and for the benefit of the town and whoever is, you know, you're listening, I did just read, and I, if I'm wrong, correct me, that we actually, you know, we have that little tag system going on where if somebody comes into the county in a stolen car or something like that. And, you know, because now that we have, you know, deputies at the county border right there, at, you know, Dunkirk, they were able to get the bad guy as the bad guy just barely got in the county. And I think that's what we want, is Calver Countyans. And of course, you know, sometimes, you know, the bad guy, the bad guys, or bad gals, you know, will just come down and take a left and come down here. So, if, as long as we're not negatively impact, you know, I'm just, you know, applaud, wholeheartedly applaud that decision.
Yeah, we're just getting up, we're getting four new people coming in the 29th. And I told you, four people are leaving, and four people are coming in, and then me and Sergeant Copper staying, I mean, there's no change in that. So, and then we're just going to build off of what?
So, county resources are being used to?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's county, yeah. It has nothing to do, it has nothing to do with what's going on here.
Very well.
There's no changes in the beach.
Okay, that's, that's what I want to hear, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Madam?
No questions, thank you. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
No questions, thank you for your service, stay safe.
Thank you, sir, you too.
So, that, that sounds good, that the beach is considered an unofficial fourth precinct of sort?
We're set up, I think they want to run more like us. I think that's what they, they kind of look at. They want, they want the other districts or substations to run more like the beaches, because we actually do a good, real good job.
That you do.
What we do, so, that's, I think that's, we're kind of example of it.
You know, if the county sheriff's office is seeking any funds from Dunkirk or the Lesby communities to support the precincts?
I wouldn't know. I would, that's above my pay grade.
Well, they, they pay county tax dollars, so they?
Yes.
Yeah, they pay.
Well, do you have any idea when the second and third precincts will be online?
So, the second, our number two precinct is basically considered Prince Frederick. That's the sheriff's office, that's there. The first precinct is going to be in Dunkirk, and so, we're all making the, all the moves are being made on the 29th. So, when we get our new people in, all the other people are transformed where they're supposed to be working, and then we're going to, so it should be the beginning of next month. And, you know, I mean, there's going to be some pitfalls as far as what technology we needed in the substations and all that kind of stuff that's going to be working on. But we're trying to, I think Charles County does, that's kind of set up somewhat like this, too. So, they have a lot of substations because they're a lot bigger of a county than us, but I think we're kind of example down here in the beach, and I think they wanted to try to do something like that. So, we'll see how it's going to work there, you know?
It's like a great idea.
Yeah, the sheriff, the sheriff, the assistant sheriff are really trying to change a few things and be sure they have a lot of support, so, for the community.
Okay, we'll all certainly anxiously follow that. Last question is, and I'm not going to ask it again maybe, but I know that there was some, a graffiti, if you will, several months back in Chesapeake Village, I believe. Just wondering if there was ever any?
I haven't heard anything new on that. I probably could have, that might have went to our Criminal Investigation Bureau, where Lieutenant Hollinger went. I can call him tomorrow and find out, and I can?
Well, I, I think the message here is that the message was heard.
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's what's important.
But I can, I can, I can still check.
I mean, by the bad kids.
Yeah.
I think I know it.
So, and there was a question, oh, I'll finish up, but. There was a question about a fraud last time, that I didn't have an answer for for the last, and I felt kind of bad about it. And I can't remember who asked me about the fraud, but all it was, was somebody didn't pay their bill at one of the restaurants, and ended up getting charged. So, it wasn't like a super big fraud. It was just somebody who didn't?
Actually, that will happen in that industry here.
Yeah, so.
Well, that's all that I had, stay safe to you and all of your colleagues countywide. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. No questions, thank you.
Well, I just want to say, as long as the beaches actually do get everything, you go ahead with Dunkirk and Lesby.
They're not going to take anything away from the beaches, so, trust me, we're not, we're not losing anything. I'm just, I'm, I'll have to try to beg for more things that I want to do, so.
Thank you for your service, stay safe.
Thank you.
Thank you. Worth Beach Volunteer Fire Department, anything you want to add to the report, Larry?
Yeah, just two things. One is, I just wanted to share that the Outdoor Expo that we held on January 13th was a success, and mark your calendars, the Annual Sportsman's Bash is scheduled for Saturday, March 2nd.
Saturday, March 2nd, okay, very good.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you. Mayor's Report. Recently, right before the holidays, the, the Calvert County Times had reached out to me and some other people asking if we had any, any wishes or anything we wanted to say about the New Year's and your resolutions and all this kind of stuff, you know, for a newspaper article. And I participated in that and so, and it did print, but the, for the sake of my mayor's report, I want to sort of just, you know, tailor that a bit and give that New Year's wish to the good citizens of Chesapeake Beach. For 2024, I wish our town folks to focus less on divisive national politics and more on our health and well-being of our families, friends, and neighbors, children in particular. Drive slower, walk more, exercise regularly, reduce stress. Provide our children with the basics, full bellies, medicine, a wholesome education and protection from bullies, domestic violence, and drug dealers. Happy New Year. Thank you. Resolutions and ordinances, we've got five of them, as I mentioned earlier. These will all be discussed at the work session, upcoming work session in February, but I do have to read it out. So here we go. Let me wet my whistle. Introduce Charter Amendment Resolution CAR 24-1. A resolution of the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach, Maryland, amending the charter of the town of Chesapeake Beach to provide for clarification of a referendum of an ordinance. I set the public hearing for February 15th at 6:50. Introduce Ordinance O-24-1. An ordinance of the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach amending the annual budget for the general fund of the town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July 1, 22 to June 30 of '23 to reconcile expenses and to ratify over expenditures. Public hearing February 15th at 6:52 PM. Introduce Ordinance O-24-2. An ordinance of the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach amending the annual budget for the water reclamation treatment plant of the town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July 1 of 22 to June 30 of '23 to reconcile expenses and ratify over expenditures. Set the public hearing for February 15th at 6:54 PM. Introduce Ordinance O-24-3. An ordinance to the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach, Maryland, amending the annual budget for the utility fund of the town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July 1 of 22 to June 30 of '23 to reconcile expenses and ratify over expenditures. Set the public hearing for February 15th at 6:56 PM. Finally, introduce ordinance O-24-4. An ordinance of the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach, Maryland, amending the annual budget for the Water Park Fund of the town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July 1 of 22 to June 30 of '23 to reconcile expenses and ratify over expenditures. I set the public hearing for February 15th at 6:58 PM. Reports. Planning and zoning, nothing. Board of Appeals, there is a continuation hearing on case 2023-03, Roden Real, Inc., Donovan Estates LLC. It was held on January 4th. The next continuation hearing is January the 25th at 7:00 PM. T-Box, they're doing a great job. In fact, Susan just reported the other day, Maryland, Chesapeake Bay got a great reporter on oysters. Oysters are doing great. So that's wonderful. Climate Change Advisory Group. You've had a bit of a climate change recently yourself, haven't you?
So, looking back, the Coastal Resiliency Plan was approved at our December meeting, as was the establishment of the Board of Port Wardens. So we're looking on moving forward from there for the plan and the board. Discussed a little bit about, get together sometime, Holly, to review the greenhouse gas inventory. And we've had yet another round of flooding on 261 between Firehouse and Seagate. So we'll have to be working on that as part of our coastal resiliency plan. That's all I have.
Very good. Okay, EDC?
EDC. The Economic Development Authority meeting scheduled for January 8th was canceled and the Economic Development Advisory Commission meeting of yesterday was held. And I mentioned we elected Kesha as our vice chair of that, and we'll be moving forward with meetings, next meeting will be March on that, Economic Advisory Commission.
Very well. Thank you. Green Team. Madam?
Yeah. Everyone, yes, just a few announcements. First of all, happy to say that Tuesday, January 23rd, is a Chesapeake Beach Tree Board meeting that'll be available online to listen or in public. Also, I wanted to mention that we have a Green Team meeting Thursday, January 25th at 6:30 at the library, and we hope to finalize all the plans for All About Osprey. That's its third topic, which is the talk that will occur on February 24th, Saturday at 10:00 AM at the Northeast Community Center in cooperation and collaboration with the Calvert County Parks and Rec. And it's all about Ospreys this year and is with Greg Currents. This should be quite a good time. We'll also have giveaways and there'll be lots of tables there this February 24th, Saturday 10:00 AM. So other than that, I hope to see everyone at the Green Team meeting on Thursday, January 25th at 6:30.
Very well. Kellum's Revitalization, Vice President Fink isn't here. Is there anything that you want to add, Greg?
No, sir. Pedal to the metal. Thank you.
Thank you. Twin Beaches Opioid Abuse Awareness Coalition?
Thank you. Yeah, no meeting in, in January. We will be having a meeting in February. That date and time will be coming out shortly. We have been working on the March 17th outreach event at the Bayside Baptist Church, and we are looking forward to that, and we'll have more information coming for that as well. We're also looking forward to the Shattered Stigma 5K and Health Fair on May 18th, as was already mentioned. And finally, I think there, there is a Community Overdose Action Town Hall Series, January 31st, 6:30 to 7:30 PM at the Prince Frederick Library, and it's being sponsored by the state. And let's see, the Maryland, Maryland's Office of Overdose Response. And the event will feature presentations from the state and local government officials and members of the public are also welcome to, to speak at this event as well. So I'm planning on going. Hope to see other folks there. Anyway, I just wanted.
Thank you. Welcome old community.
Thanks. Nothing has happened with the community separate from what was already in the Administrator's Report.
Hey, thank you. Anyone finished business? New business. Town Council to consider approving a two-year contract with Schaefer Fireworks in the amount of $90,000 with an annual rain fee of $400 if the display is moved due to inclement weather. Funds to cover this cost will come from the special events line item of the town of Chesapeake Beach general fund budget. If we, is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion?
There was also Polly, a package. Do we need to go down there separately?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it? Okay. Okay, so while we're in the, in the fireworks, fireworks, you know, conversation here, okay. I'm recommending that the Town Council enter into an agreement with, with McLean Contracting Company for five years for total cost of $162,500 and additional annual charge of $1,500 if a rain date occurs to secure two barges and a licensed captain to transport barges for the town annual fireworks budget. Is there a motion to approve? Discussion?
Question. In that memo, it discusses.
Yes, I'm happy to take feedback. We are going to work through that with the barge company and the pyrotechnician about April timeframe. So I put that there so that you could provide me with feedback.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it? Anybody in the audience have any public comment at this time? Hearing none. Council Lightning Round, I'll begin with Madam Bodine.
I'd just like to say thank you, Jay, and to your team, your snow removal efforts. I have a feeling you're not quite out of the woods yet and just thank them all.
I will, then. Thank you.
Thank you. It's really appreciated.
Yeah, same here. And Jay, I'm impressed that you sat here for the whole meeting. You're going to have an early start in the morning, so thank you for hanging on.
He said I was going to bed, Larry.
I noticed you dozing off a little bit there, so, but thank you, all your people, for all the hard work. And Josh, thank you. I know how hard it is at the plant when we have these torrential rainfall, so thanks for all your effort and your staff. Thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to just take this opportunity to underscore the town services during snow events, but particularly the partnership that we've had with all of our HOAs quite a long time now. I don't know when the town had begun doing the pass-through lane, if you will, in those, through those HOAs. I'm still in full support of making, permanently codifying that for, in perpetuity. I'm just speaking for Richfield Station that the density in those locations, that they're all paying the same property tax rate as the single-family homes that are on town roads. So they're certainly contributing quite a bit in taxes there. And we know that the partnership, there's some hold harmless agreement that it's been standard operating procedure as long as I can remember. I know that they're going from year to year. Is that, is that a yearly, still a yearly? Has there been any consideration to trying to make that like a four-year term or something to try to avoid any of the hiccups with the HOA turnover and them not understanding what that stuff is and then?
Yeah, I think that's why it is annual, because there is turnover, and so you want them to understand the agreement and, and continue to hold the town harmless each year.
Theoretically, if this body or a future body were to vote in to codify and permanently make that service applicable to those HOA, just again, it's a pass-through, you know, they're not digging out parking lots or anything like that, but it's a tremendous help, especially when you, you know, in the morning of a significant event that the town has made a pass-through, that just helps everybody dig out faster and it's safer. So I just wanted to mention that I do think that we should consider making that, codifying that to be permanent. I think that, everybody have a warm rest of the January.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to let folks know about this interesting presentation that's going to be given Sunday, January 28th. This was shared with me by Dr. Schisler. It's entitled "The Racial Wealth Gap Rooted in Land and Home Ownership." And so it's going to be a presentation and an expert panel will be there, and they'll have group discussions. It'll be at Middleham and St. Peter's Parish Hall in Lesby, Maryland, and that, 2:00 to 5:00 PM. And I've also shared this flyer as well as the other flyer on the opioid event with Holly to distribute to the town. So it'll be more interesting. With that, thank you all. Be safe.
I just wanted to say that I was really interested and glad to hear from the Calvert Health regarding their work and future plans for the county. Access to good and comprehensive healthcare is not something to take for granted. There are great swaths of communities in this country where they have to go miles, and it's a big deal if you have to go to the doctor. And if you need an operation, it's even worse. So I think that I personally appreciate, I absolutely appreciate that my family's good fortune to live in an area where such substantial care is in our neighborhood. And I'm happy to hear from them every year about where they're going and the changes they've made. Thank you.
Well, yeah, you know, people talk about, oh, I moved here because the cost of living's lower and it's, and it's kind of like, yeah, but I've got friends that tell me their nearest[1773.83]